I would like to call the meeting to order. Could you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Reed.
Here.
Vice Mayor Litt.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here, ma'am.
Councilmember Morciano.
Here.
Councilmember Tinsley.
Here.
Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications this evening?
No, ma'am.
Excellent. So next we have announcements and presentations. I'd like to please call Police Department and National State Recreation -- oops, sorry. I would like to please call Chief Shannon to the podium.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. For the record, Clint Shannon, your Chief of Police. Just wanted to bring to your attention and to recognize some members of the Police Department for some outstanding work that was recently done. If Sam Dobson and Major Bob Wilson come forward, please. As you know, we are accredited through both CFA and Kalia, and we have been for some time. Sam Dobson is our accreditation manager, and Major Bob Wilson oversees that administration side of the House. But recently, we were -- we've been accredited since 1996, I believe, with Kalia, and shortly after that with CFA. We're only one of two law enforcement agencies in Palm Beach County that are duly accredited, and only one of 24 in the state of Florida, which includes 387 law enforcement agencies. So needless to say, we're very proud of the accomplishments. The end of last year, it was especially hard for us during our reaccreditation because they took place -- they're usually separated, sometimes by years. Last year, they were separated by about six weeks when we went through our -- both our state and our national reaccreditation. So it was quite a scramble and quite a feat to attack. But Sam is used to doing this. He's a veteran of the city and of the department, and it was quite a feat. We are both with CFA, we are excelsior-recognized, and with Kalia, we are meritorious, which means we have been continuously accredited for more than 15 years with no issues at all. So it's quite a feat. Recently, we received our state accreditation in St. Augustine and our national accreditation in Orlando. When I went to St. Augustine to receive it, I couldn't have been prouder. There was many, many agencies in a giant ballroom there receiving their reaccreditation, and we were the only agency there that did not request and were granted a waiver for COVID. And what was happening -- and there's nothing wrong with that. During these last few years, it's been quite a challenge, especially with training and getting everybody together. So many agencies had shut down their training divisions, and we're not able to meet their accreditation standards. So in each and every one of those cases, waivers were gladly granted. But I got to say, we're the only agency there that didn't even request a COVID waiver. We had met all of our standards, and looking at our department, I was extremely proud. Again, it's a feat going through this reaccreditation process that takes the entire department. There's many, many people in our department that had a hand in this, but under Major Wilson's tutelage, but mostly it's Sam Dobson. So we really wanted to recognize him tonight and the feat that he's done. He's been through this many times. This one was especially special, and I couldn't be prouder of him. So with that, we have our CFA reaccreditation award, which we want to give to Sam, and we're awaiting our Kalia. But just wanted to recognize him, and I thank Mr. Manager and Mayor and Council for recognizing.[268.52][268.55](applause)
Thank you so much, Chief Shannon, and to Sam Dobson and Officer Wilson. We couldn't be more proud. Thank you for doing it so well and expeditiously as well. Thank you. Next is our Capitol Projects Update.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. It's always a pleasure to see such hard work recognized by agencies throughout the state and even the nation of our Police Department and Fire Department. Also, along with that recognition, I'd like to present to you tonight our Capitol Improvements Project Update and Team. It has been my position in the past that I periodically bring this to your attention so that you and the public can get an idea of the projects, the progress it's making, the financing of those projects, and to get a look at those people who actually do all the hard work of putting this all together and making sure it gets done. I think you'll be duly impressed with this update, and I just want to publicly say how proud I am of each and every member that serves on this, and there are many of the Capitol Improvements Project's team. You do a wonderful job, and you save a lot of money, taxpayer money, when you do it, and I think you'll be as proud of them as I am. And just love you guys. You do great work. Thank you. David Reyes.
Thank you, Ron. Good evening, Council. For the record, David Reyes, Community Services Administrator. Tonight, I'm here with an amazing group of people, like Ron mentioned, who are the ones who have made the city's Capitol Program a success. They're the reason why we are at the forefront of municipal construction. And when you see this presentation, you see the updates, you know no one built projects the way we do. In fact, I would say there might be some private business that couldn't even build the way this team have built projects in the city. So I think you'll be proud. They have set the bars, and this is the team that has set the bar for others to follow. So I thought tonight was a great opportunity for our City Council. You see me here doing a lot of updates, and it's usually by myself, and tonight, we wanted to make sure that you get to meet the entire team and the people that are really doing all the work and making these things happen. So tonight's presentation, we're going to do a couple of different things. First, we're going to provide you with an update on the projects that are going on right now, keep you up to date on what's going on. Then we're going to talk a little bit about our 10-year history. So we're going to take you back to see what we have accomplished in the last 10 years. Then we're going to talk about our strategy and kind of give you an overview of how we make this happen, and we'll close with, you see, some of the savings that this city has realized because of the hard work of each one of the team members that you see here tonight. So we're going to go ahead and get started. First, we're going to start with our City Engineer, Todd Angold. He's going to update you on our mobility projects.
Good evening, Council. I want to give you an update. Since we've established our mobility fee, we've been putting that fee to work, and we're going to go over some of the projects that we've done to date and we're working on for the future. Campus Drive is a recently completed project. We spent about $1.2 million, and we've destroyed the sidewalk on the west side of the road. We've added a 12-foot sidewalk. We've added a brand-new 8-foot sidewalk on the east side of the road. Dave, you want to turn that? We've added a roundabout at Fairchild in Campus Drive for the entrance to the library, the school, the EC Theater, the governmental center. Makes traffic flow much better, and we added lighting in that area as well. The next project we're working on, which is scheduled for 2023 build, is a pedestrian crosswalk lighting project that's going to encompass areas around Palm Beach Gardens High School, Palm Beach Gardens Elementary School, and Howl Walkings. And those are lit crosswalks with improved crosswalk access and visibility, and they'll be installed in 11 locations around those schools. That is going to be $4.5 million, and we got a $330,000 grant from the TPA on that particular project. Excellent, Dave? Also scheduled for 2023 is Kyoto Gardens Drive, which we did receive a grant for that as well. We got a roughly $900,000 grant, which is about a $1.3 million overbuild for the entire project. FPNL is currently working on the south side of the road. They're installing the 8-foot sidewalk on the south side of the road. We're going to do the improvements on the north side of the road. We're going to include a 5-foot bicycle lane as well as an 8-foot sidewalk in that area and add landscaping and lighting. That is scheduled for 2023, $1.3 million. Burns Road, we're going to add a cycle track on the south side of the road. There'll be a 9-and-a-half-foot cycle track that'll be separated. It'll be installed on the south side of the road, $1.3 million build, and we got a $1 million grant from the TPA on that project that is scheduled to be built in 2024. And when I talk about scheduled to be built, there's a lot of stuff going on behind the scenes as these grants come from the TPA. We do a lot of work with the FDOT from now until the 2024 build. So we'll work continuously on this project until it actually goes to construction. Because the grant is with the FDOT, we have to follow all of their procedures. So it's very time-consuming, but the money's well worth it. The next two projects you've actually seen last month, and it's Fairchild. There's two bicycle lanes on Fairchild, as well as additional sidewalk on the south side of the road. It's roughly a million-dollar grant with a $1.3 million overall cost. That's scheduled for 2025. And then we've got the Gardens Parkway project, which is bike lanes on both sides of the roads. There exists an existing sidewalk that is not within our right-of-way on the north side of the road, so we don't have to touch that. But we are going to add an 8-foot sidewalk on the south side of the road, and this will stretch from alternate A1A all the way to Prosperity Farms Road. And that grant funding was $3 million with a $4.6 million build in 2025.
Now, we're going to have Public Services Director Cory Wilder giving you an update on our baseball.
Good evening, Council. Bleacher covers located at Gardens Park Showcase Field just east of this complex. We've installed three bleacher covers to complement the existing 16 structures at Gardens Park. Each structure is equipped with a metal roof and tongue-and-groove underlayment. The project was completed in March of 2022. They provide ample shade and protection from inclement weather for our patrons. This structure located behind home plate encompasses the entire bleacher, which is capable of seating 153 people. And along the first and third baselines, we went with a more modern approach and installed six high-top tables with space in front of them for folks to bring their own seating as needed. The Miracle League Playground is located just adjacent to the Miracle League Field at Gardens Park, provides great space for children of all abilities. It has just shy of 4,500 square feet of pour-and-place surface with custom designs to complement the baseball facility. The playground is equipped with two zip cruises that allow children to race to the end and back, including my beautiful son pictured here. It's also equipped with a We Go Swing, which allows children to experience the thrill of swinging without transferring from a piece of equipment such as a wheelchair. This piece is one of the first of its kind. In fact, it's the first We Go Swing that our contractor had installed. Now, just south of the Miracle League Playground will soon be Bank Shot Basketball Court, and as you can see from the picture here, we've recently paved the space. Poles are being stored at the operations center. We're waiting for the backboards to arrive from the manufacturer. The picture to the right is not our park, but that will be a -- that's a rendering of what it will look like. Bank Shot is a self-competitive, non-running, inclusionary game that accommodates players of all abilities, so we're excited about that complement to this facility. And our field restoration, beginning in 2018 and finishing up this year in 2022, we renovated fields 1 through 8 at Gardens Park. The renovations included new Latitude 36 Bermuda turf grass, amended soil, crushed red brick warning tracks, and synthetic turf halos behind fields 3 through 8 home plates.
Now, we're going to have Jennifer Nelly. She's going to provide you with an update on our City Monument Sign Program.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Back in 2019, we decided to take a look at our signage program, and in order to best serve our community and promote the image of the city, we decided to create the Citywide Monument Sign Program. We've installed 14 signs throughout the city, as well as nine wayfinding signs. We have 17 signs currently scheduled, and we typically install two to three per year.
Now, we're going to have our Fire Chief, Deputy Fire Chief, Sean Brodel. She's going to give you an update on the exhaust filtration system for all fire stations.
Good evening, Council. Sean Brodel, for the record. We are currently getting ready to install the Airhawk diesel exhaust filter systems in all fire stations, and it's designed to scrub the air that's still in the apparatus bay from the apparatus diesel that's being exhausted. So when the doors are activated, these systems turn on, they evacuate, and filter the diesel particulates, which can be carcinogenic and hazardous to the employees. So it's designed to capture it before it leaks into the living quarters, and I'm happy to report that we've received all of the units, and we're currently working with facilities on getting the electrical service run to the ceilings where these will be mounted, and we project these should be installed in the next two to three months.
Next, Angela Brown. She's going to provide you with an update on the Burns Road Community Center expansion.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The goal of this project is to develop a modern design for the renovation and expansion of the existing community center. The existing 43,000-square-foot community center was originally built in 1983, and then it was later renovated in 2006. However, over the past decade, our programs have significantly increased requiring the need for expansion and renovation. Under consent on tonight's agenda, Council will be considering a contract award to Olson Lavoy Collaborative to evaluate the facility, taking into consideration the need for additional space, staff workstations, and the possibility of relocating the city's daycare, the Riverside Youth and Richmond Center, to this location. Olson Lavoy Collaborative is the same architect who designed the city's tennis clubhouse, as well as the golf, the par-three golf clubhouse under construction, and the adjacent aquatic center under construction as well. The design process is anticipated to take approximately six to eight months. The design will then go into, go out to bid to hire a contractor, and ultimately, we would like to be under construction early next year, but that will, of course, depend on what the final design will be. Immediately next door to the community center, we are -- this is an image of the old, the original restroom building that was demolished this past January, along with the adjacent Lightbird Center. Both buildings will be replaced with a new 7,700-square-foot facility. The contractor, who is RL Burns, has formed the foundation and is running underground plumbing and electric. The building is estimated for completion this November. This is the north elevation from the pool. Sorry, the Lightbird Station. This is the 3D model of the interior. Staff has worked with the interior designer incorporating the city's logo colors. And now Todd will provide you with an update on the adjacent pool.
The pool's currently under construction. This is the original design of the pool. Dave, if you want to hit that real quick. And this picture was taken last week. We have actually formed the pool, poured the pool. The big foundations you see over on the left-hand side of the pool is actually for the slide. The slide is currently being manufactured in Canada right now. We're hoping to take delivery of the slide by the end of May. We're hoping to pull the deck by the end of May and start filling the pool sometime in June.
Now Cory Wilder is going to give you an update on our sports lighting upgrades.
So to date, we have completed retrofitting of existing sports field lights to LEDs at Gardens Park, Fields 1 through 8, PGA Park tennis basketball courts, and Plant Drive pickleball courts. Currently, we have scheduled to retrofit the lights at Lilac Park Baseball, Oaks Park Tennis, and Marisol Park multi-purpose basketball and softball. We still have a number of facilities that do not have LEDs that we will look to retrofit as soon as the warranties have expired. Some of the realized benefits to retrofitting the existing lighting to LEDs are to decrease the energy cost and maintenance cost. As you can see here, some of which we've realized already from our 2019 install of Plant Drive Park of an annual savings of $25,000, and our recently completed last year in 2021 Gardens Park, an annual savings of $50,000.
Next is Chris Denhart, our Operations Manager for Fleet. He's going to give you an update on electric vehicle fleet chargers.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Currently, we have seven electric Nissan Lees in service in our fleet. Charge point is the charging station currently being used throughout the city for all electric vehicle charging. In total, we have 18 charging stations. Gardens Park has four, City Hall has eight, Tennis and Pickleball Center has two, North County District Park has two, Sand Hill Crane Golf Course has two. The charging stations are free to use at all of our sites throughout the city. We partner with FPNL for our charging stations. The city provides the location and the dedicated parking spaces. FPNL provides the charging station, the installation, and the maintenance for all of those stations. We're pleased with the partnership, and it continues to be of benefit to the residents and the visitors of the city.
Next, back to Jennifer Nelly. She's going to give you an update on bus shelters, artistic bus shelters.
Good evening again. At the December 5, 2013 City Council meeting, Council unanimously voted to move forward with the Artistic Bus Shelter Program, which is funded through the Art and Public Places Fund. As you can see, there's two different designs. We have a large design and a slim design. The shelters were designed by local environmental graphic and industrial design artist Mark Fuller. Originally, 13 sites were identified based upon high-volume riderships. Since then, we've installed seven more, which brings our total to 20 artistic bus shelters throughout our beautiful city. This fiscal year, we plan to install a new shelter on North Military Trail across from Palm Beach Gardens High School, and then to assist with the high ridership volume associated with the Palm Beach State College, we are going to install two additional shelters along Campus Drive. And each of the shelters feature decorative panels, seating, waste receptacles, shade, which provide relief from the sun and the showers that we often see. And the shelters not only are artistically pleasing, but they are very functional, and they provide our residents and local community with a safe place to take public transportation.
Next, we're going to have our City Engineer. He's going to provide an update, and this one will be between Todd and Angela, talk about the city parcel and the Avenue property.
As part of our Western development, we received allotment of several pieces of property from the developers of the Western area. We are going to go over what we intend to do in some of these parcels. We received 15 acres from the Avenue Development Company. It's located on the corner of Coconut Boulevard and Avenue Drive. It'll be the future home for Fire Station Number Six located in that area. We're also looking at doing a, just a passive park in that area with an amphitheater, open grass areas, walkways through there, plenty of pavilions, just an area to go and relax as a community area. There's not going to be a lot of parking associated with this particular area. We also jointly share this site with Seacoast Utilities, and we're looking to have some efficiencies there. We're going to share our surface water management system lakes, as well as share our entryway so we don't have to have two driveways, and we're going to co-locate a radio tower that will be utilized by our public safety, as well as Seacoast to read meters. Clint, would you like to give an overview?
Sure. On the site that Todd was talking about, we're looking to install a 145-foot monopole, which is critical and necessary for our emergency communications infrastructure to support our Western communities. As you know, I mean, our police radio communications are the backbone of our 9/11 system and help provide or provide public safety and emergency response throughout the city.
Now Angela is going to give you an update on the Fire Station, future Fire Station Six.
Fire Station Six, as you saw, that was located on the southeast corner of that site plan, will somewhat emulate the same design as Fire Station Number Two. It's located on Campus Drive, which has proven successful since its construction in 2016. This particular design has been used in a few other locations throughout the county. City Council will be considering a contract award to an architect firm by July to start the design for this project. The 10,500-square-foot facility will include a three, will include three apparatus bays, a gym, punk rooms, and offices. We hope to complete the design by this October and then hire a contractor by early next year. Construction is estimated to take approximately 12 to 14 months. We expect the station to be fully operational by July 2024. And Deputy Chief Brodel will provide you with an update on the recruitment.
Good evening again. So I'm going to give you a quick update on the recruitment and selection process for Station Six and the staffing. So for logistical reasons, we're going to break the group up into groups for a total of 21 personnel to Station Six. The first group, we plan on the selection process in November of this year, with the onboarding and the new hire recruitment class to start in February of '23. That'll be the first group of 10. And the second group will start the selection process in March of '23, and then the onboarding and new hire recruitment camp will be in July of '23. The overall goal is to have all 21 onboarded, hired, released his paramedic, and clear their probationary period prior to Station Six opening. So when we get the keys to Station Six, we'll have 21 firefighters in the system so we have a seamless transition service as we come, as it comes onboard.
Next is our golf course expansion. As you know, this is a multi-faceted project. There's a lot of faces, a lot of moving pieces. Golf course, clubhouse, new road, maintenance building. There's a lot of elements. So Todd and Angela are going to tag team this one and provide you an update on this project.
Again, this goes back to what we talked about. We acquired two parcels during the Western expansion, one from Avenue and the other from Balsamo Project, which is about 130 acres out of this particular area. We are going to build a brand-new driving range with a 19-hole par-three course and almost an acre putting course, an 18-hole putting course that will be installed out there as well. The new clubhouse will be installed, as well as all the other ancillary things we need like a cart barn, new maintenance facilities, chemical buildings, in order to operate both of these golf courses jointly. And last but not least, we're going to connect Sand Hill Crane Drive from its terminus all the way to Avenue Drive so we can have a full seamless connection for all of our residents, both here and out in the Avenue Development as well. So this course was approved as the Nicholas Design Course. It has 32 acres. It has 19 holes and a very, very large driving range that will be lit. This is a close-up view of what we are trying to accomplish, and this is a view of what we have accomplished. So to date, we've moved about 680 cubic yards of the overall 800 cubic yards that we need to move to fill this golf course. We've built over 32 acres of lakes. We're constructing the driving range as we speak. We've got some minor We've got some minor touches to do out on the driving range, and we should be grassing the driving range by the end of this month. This is a view of some of the other holes that we have here. This is looking from west to east on the project. I want to give you an idea of what it takes to build a project like this. So in order for us to accomplish this, we, as a city, do not hire an overall contractor. We do most of the contracting ourselves. So separately, we hire an earthwork contractor, and he's going to dig thirty-two acres of lakes and move eight hundred thousand yards of dirt. Separately, we hire the guy that's going to build the greens, the T-boxes, put in a golf course drainage. We hire separately the guy that's going to do the irrigation. We actually purchase the irrigation pump station separately because we can get it cheaper that way. We hire the guys to build the bridges, to build the bulkheads, the roadway, the underground drainage. Separately, we just issued a PO for the site lighting that's going to go on the driving range itself. We work with FPNL for the street lighting, for the parking lot lighting. We hire a separate contractor to do grassing. We hire a specialty contractor to do specialized grassing. We hire an overall landscape contractor for the golf course. Separately, we hire one for the roadway. And this goes on and on, and that's how we put these projects together. And Dave will go over the amount of money that we save when we do this kind of work. It's not easy to do, but it helps us get these projects accomplished. So that's the kind of work and effort that we actually put into these projects. Oh, last week, we received our permit from South Florida after a year and a half for the actual fourteen acres we received from the Balsamo Project. So we received the permit, and that's three days later after we got the permit. We immediately jumped into action because this is the area that's going to hold our maintenance facility, it's going to house our parking facility for the clubhouse. So we got to catch up to what Angela's doing with the clubhouse and what we're doing with the golf course. But we're still on schedule. Angela?
The Nest Clubhouse is approximately thirty-five percent complete. The contractor, who is Aaron's, is currently working on pouring the second-floor rake beams. So that would be that triangular piece that you see, so that he can set the roof trusses this month. The first-floor walls are being laid out, and electrical and plumbing are being installed. Construction is expected to be complete this November and fully operational by January of 2023. Here's an image of the first-floor driving bay. You see the bays up to the corner there. This is also a view from the interior, second floor. You can see it looks similar to the tennis clubhouse. It has a lot of the same features. And of course, this is the rendering of the, sorry, the exterior eighteen bays. We're going to have TrackMan technology in each bay as well. Casey Mitchell is here today, I think, I saw her, if you have any questions about that. But it will have, hi Casey, it will have TrackMan technology. So it's a golf tracking golf ball tracking system. So it will help patrons improve their swing or gauge where the ball is to improve their
Now, we're going to give you a little bit of a look back of the last ten years of the projects in the city and what the team has accomplished in the last ten years. For this, we're going to have Arien Penzac, our finance manager.
Thank you. I've had the opportunity of working with these wonderful people for quite a few years now. Looking back to see how far we've come, I can safely say we've seen tremendous growth. Within the last ten years, the city has completed a total of ninety capital improvement projects totaling ninety-two point two million dollars. Currently, the city has a total sixty-six active projects that we are tracking with a total budget of forty-nine point three million. As you can see in the bar graph to your right, the budget appropriation column shows a significant increase. This is the year City Council approved the issuance of the 2017 Public Improvement Bond for the One-Cent Surtax Projects with a total appropriation of twenty-nine million nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, which funded District Park Soccer Complex, the City Hall PD Expansion, the new operations facility, and the renovation to Fire Station One. Last year, in 2021, due to the tax revenues received from the One-Cent Surtax being greater than our initial expectation, built up with, excuse me, combined with the buildup of investment revenues, the Budget Oversight Committee recommended the allocation of four million dollars for the construction of the Aquatics Building, bringing the total appropriation for all One-Cent Surtax projects to thirty-three million nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So in total, the capital improvement team has managed a hundred and fifty-seven projects over the last ten years totaling a hundred and forty-one point six million. As you can see, our team is charged with a pretty big task. The ultimate purpose of our capital improvement program and this team is to promote planning, examine our long-range needs, and serves as a tool to forecast the demands on revenues and future borrowing needs. I'll pass it back to David so he can explain more on how the team manages the city's projects utilizing this approach.
So as you can see, a hundred and fifty-seven projects in the last ten years, a hundred and forty million dollars. You heard me say this over and over and over again, we do not have a capital improvement department in this city. We have a team, which is here tonight. We we work together. All of the departments are involved in the process of capital improvement projects. So all the stakeholders are involved. Our project approach and strategies is is twofold, and I'm going to go with the first one is our team approach. So every project is from the beginning to the end is all the team, is all the departments working together to really bring every one of the projects to the table, to make sure that we have the best projects and the best products for our residents. Everyone is involved, from our building department, fire department. So all this process allows not only to really build a good product, but to expedite. Our building department gets involved in the early stages, thirty percent plans we're sending to them, review it, sixty percent. This entire process, they see it. So when it's time to get a permit, they already review every detail of the project, plus also give us feedback on things that we should do, the change to make sure that we don't miss. So they're all involved. Fire Department does the same thing. All of the departments are involved. That gives us the opportunity to have every one of the projects that we build in the city shovel-ready. And you're going to see, as I continue to provide you this information, that even on our five-year plans, when you see a project in our five-year plan, those projects that are five years, they're ready. When we put it into our plans, we have already spent tremendous amount of time looking into the project, the needs of the project, and trying to make those projects as ready as possible. So if something changes and we need to expedite, we're ready to go, we're ready to take action. We don't have to start planning after the fact. We're planning before we bring those projects to you. That's because the entire team is involved, which gives us timely completions to the projects. When we're building projects, this entire team is involved. So if there's a question on the project that is an IT question, some contractor has said something happened and it's an IT, we send that information to IT, and within hours, we have an answer. We have a question about security, we send it to the police department, within hours we have an answer. So there's no bureaucracy, there's no waiting. Things are moving so fast that the contractors, and in fact, we have contractors that do projects with the city and give us priority because we could provide them information so fast that they don't waste time. So when it's time for them to 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 select projects, they'll give us priority because they know they're not wasting their time with us. And that's because everyone here is so invested in making sure that the projects are done the right way and that we maintain our timeline, that they drop whatever they're doing to make that happen. And that also allows to expedite the project approval process, and you are part of this process as well. You've been a great advocate, and you've been a great part of what you do. Thanks to the council by trusting our city manager and the staff by expediting projects, and also to giving the city manager the flexibility to manage those projects. We're being able to expedite projects and build faster than anybody else. I'll give you an example. District Park wouldn't happen in a year without the flexibility and your approval and your support. So we were able to get that project done in a year because we had the funding, we had the flexibility, we were able to go and start moving all the pieces that we needed to make that project happen. And then you'll see the results of that later on in this presentation. So that's one of the team approaches. The next approach that we also taken that is unique to the city, you, I talked to a lot of people, and there's no other city that out there that takes the challenge to take a project from start to finish. And Todd kind of talked a little bit about this, a lot of the projects that we GC in-house. So we actually doing everything from the beginning to the end, we manage the entire project. So when we talk about general contracting, that means that we're doing project management, coordination, construction schedule, we're scheduling every piece of that, we doing that construction scheduling in-house, field management, even equipment rental. For District Park, we were, we needed more resources, we're hiring labor workers to come in to help us continue to build so we could stay on track. All of that work is done in-house by everyone in this team. What that means is that now, instead of processing one invoice, because I have one general contractor and now just one single invoice, I'm processing thirty to forty invoices, because now I have to pay my earth guy, I have to pay the material guy, I have to pay this irrigate, every single one of those is a separate transaction. All has to be coordinated by this entire team in order to maximize the funding allowed and make those projects a much better projects and much saving to our residents. So the benefits of doing all of this is, number one, every department is involved. So you know that you're going to get the best product because the users and the departments are involved continually give you feedback from the beginning, even during construction. When we start building construction, and we're doing our clubhouse right now, IT is on-site inspecting and making sure that their infrastructure is done the way they need it. Police Department not only give us ideas on how we need to do the security, but they actually inspect it and make sure it's built correctly, all the cameras are where they need to be. Every department not simply give you an email and here's my suggestions and walk away. No, they're actually part of the entire process, and that it brings each of those projects to the highest level that you could get in the quality of construction. Significant cost savings, and we're going to talk about that briefly, and the timely completion of the projects, because we GC the project, because we manage all the pieces that we could control the time. Now I don't have to rely on a contractor GC to tell me I don't have the resources, it's going to take time, because we own that, we own the project, we could control the whole project. So what is all of this means in dollars for our residents? What does that mean? Well, I'll give you a couple of examples. And I want to say that a lot of these numbers in here, I went conservative, I didn't even, I just took a very conservative approach. The fact that we were able to expedite the District Park, City Hall, and the Operations Center, the Operations Center was out, five years out, and when the Surtax came about and the City Council decided to borrow the money and expedite those projects, we were ready. So we were able to bring that project from five years out to build it, and we were ready to build that project. So here's a comparison. District Park was built thirteen point seven million dollars, that was how much we spent to build District Park. It took us thirteen months to build that project, so extremely fast to build a fifty-acre from zero to a finished product, grand opening of that park was completed in 2019. Today, if we build that park today, it will cost the city seventeen point eight million dollars. If we would have taken the same approach that a lot of other cities and municipalities taken to where they waited to get the funding and then go out to do these projects, we would have been in that situation, starting to build District Park somewhere right now. City Hall expansion, eight point eight million dollars, at today's dollars, is eleven point four million dollars. And those are real numbers, and that was the ones this continues to increase. And the new Operations Center, from six point nine million dollars to eight point nine million dollars, a total of eight point eight million dollars that we were able to save by taking this approach. Also, there's additional savings based on the approach that we talked about doing the general contracting services in-house. And the average, a general contractor charges between fifteen percent to a twenty-five percent of the overall cost of the project for his services, to do all the work that I just talked to you about. The more complicated projects, they're usually on the high end of the twenty-five percent, where the more simpler project, you could get it down to the fifteen. To use a conservative number, I went with an eighteen percent. So I didn't even go all the way, although District Park and Golf really are extremely high-complicated projects. So here's the savings realized just in general contracting alone. District Park was a two point four million dollar savings, left one point five million dollars for the golf course expansion. The Sand Hill Crane Road is nine hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-one thousand for Shady Lakes, and a hundred and seventeen at three hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. That's a five point eight million dollar savings. In addition to the eight point nine million dollars that we saved by expediting the other projects, this is close to fifteen million dollars in saving in the last, since 2019, that we have been able to save by the approach that the team has taken with these projects. So at this time, I would love the opportunity to have the entire CIP here to stand up. So I'm going to ask guys if you could please stand up. So this is our CIP team right here. They're the one who have made this possible. It's their work, their hard work and dedication that really made all this happen. And this, you know, everyone here is just so invested and so, you know, just into the projects. And just so you know, this is not the only thing they do. This is what we call other duties as assigned. Each of them have all their responsibilities, all the department, all the things they do. CIP is just one piece of the puzzle that they do in addition to everything else they do every day, and they have make this happen. Our city engineer, we've been able to do the GC in-house because he's able to help us and guide us and have all the resources. Angela and Jen, they're the one who keep me, you know, in line and coordinating, they're the one who help me coordinate all the pieces, all those, they touch every project. And Arien, for sure, that she's the one who makes sure that our finances are in the right track, and she remind us you're going in the wrong. So everyone here has, yes, she's making sure we're 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 not spending what we're not supposed to spend. So but again, everyone here is just, it's just a big part, and I just wanted to recognize because they're the one who make things happen. So here's your team, this is your capital improvement team. We're more than happy to answer any questions.
Ron, do you have anything else you want to say before we talk to the council?
No, my only observation is, I guess you can tell David is a little bit passionate about his job and what he does and the people he works with, and we don't want to minimize the direction and the hard work, the headaches, and the time that David spends trying to direct all of these capital projects while he's doing his other job at the same time as Emergency Operations Director and all the other things in his daily activities. So thank you to David.
Thank you. I'll bring it around to council, I'll go last. Does anyone else want to speak? Go ahead, Rochelle.
David, thank you for that presentation. That was quite an overview, and as, you know, from sitting up here and looking out at all of you, you are why we are the number one city in which to live and why we're becoming the host destination that that we are and the host city that we are. People want to live here, people want to come and visit and play here on our fields, and it's it's just awesome. It's mind-blowing what you've been able to accomplish in the period of time that you had it. So kudos and bravo to everybody.
Thank you. Mark?
There's not much to say, really. I mean, you guys do a fantastic job, and we're just proud to be a part of it in any, in a small way that we are, just to thank you for your efforts. We see how hard you guys work, obviously, and in the five years that I've been sitting up here, I've never once seen any of you guys not show a passion for the city and for each other, and that teamwork is is unique in any organization, especially God. Well done, and thank you for your commitment to to all of, everything that you do and for our residents and and just keeping the balls rolling in all different directions. So thanks.
Carl?
That was a lot to absorb. That was like twenty Kentuma presentations in one. Except when he talks, we kind of nod off a little bit up here, and we're like, oh, come on already. Nothing personal, Kent. But really, on our end, you know, I know we sign off on a lot of stuff, but a lot of these visions are going long before it even gets on our radar. And the way that we can do this is trusting in the process, and we have to trust in Ron first. And if we didn't trust in Ron, and then, well, it starts with Ron, but then I know I've been here six years, and we've all been here years, Marcy's back again, et cetera, et cetera, re-elect. et cetera, reelections, we've all been here a while. And we get to know you guys, and, you know, we get to trust all of you guys. So, really, you guys just make us look good, you know? Because we get to be involved, probably the easiest end is trusting in the vision and the direction that the city's going. And, you know, I for one, you know, we had some naysayers on, I forgot what project, it might've been the golf course. Why are we building another golf course? Well, we build golf courses because we want our people who live here, and all of these things, tennis, so on and so on, soccer, baseball, we want our people that live here to stay here. You don't have a reason, you don't need a reason to go somewhere else. You almost feel like putting a gate around the entire Palm Beach Gardens and start charging people to come into it. You know, it's turning out to be that good. So, you know, I said at last council meeting, you know, we love you guys, you guys do a great job. As the electeds, we put the faith of the community and our trust in you, from us five. We still represent the sixty thousand people that live here, that elect us. And then we get intimate in all of this stuff, and you know, I don't get many people calling me going, why are you doing that? Makes no sense, because they see the vision, and they live here for a reason. So, great job, thank you, Ron, and, you know, we'll still keep signing off on stuff, okay? Keep it going.
Marcy, thank you, Carl.
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you. I know we all said it, and I agree with my colleagues that have already spoke, but we've approved a lot of these projects, you know, a couple here and a couple there, and this year and that year, and it is really nice to, and impressive, to see all of these projects in one presentation, because you forget, you know, a hundred and fifty-seven projects over several years, but you forget about. I remember when I was back in two thousand eighteen approving the capital improvement bond so that we can build it now, and today, in that time, today's dollars, now look at the savings that that actually came to fruition. You know, the thought back then came to fruition, so that's really nice. I remember sitting at Commissioner Valache's office numerous times, asking for, can we please have the land for the district park so we can build the district park? And, you know, years and years later, I even brought Marc Marciano one time as a soccer dad to Commissioner Valache's office to gain the land, and look at what it turned into. You guys took it and made it so special. So, you know, I really, really appreciate the bus shelters, that's, I'm so glad that that's still a program that's going strong today after many years of that. And that's something that, you know, I remember years ago, driving down the street, seeing kids, adults, and just people in general, sitting under a tree in the shade to get out of the hot sun or the rain, waiting for the bus stop, and I couldn't stand it. And having now see so many peppered throughout our city is really, really what makes our city unique. And I remember Angela saying, we don't have enough right-of-way, what do we do? And she actually came up with the slender bus shelter to make it fit. So, you know, thinking out of the box is just, you know, what you guys do time and time again, and I want you to know that it's very, very appreciated. And again, impressive is the word that comes to my mind, but, you know, I really appreciate your other duties, because I know and I see that you guys are, you know, in every which department, you're doing your jobs, and then you're doing this on top of it. So I know that you're also reviewing the tons of projects that are coming, because, you know, obviously, development is very strong and happening in our city as well, private development, and you're reviewing that as well. So, kudos to you all, and thank you so much for doing what you do, and thank you for bringing this to our attention, because it is so nice to see in one comprehensive presentation. So I appreciate that.
Well said, everybody. So thank you so much for yet another excellent presentation. I've been on edge waiting for it for days. David hinted at it on Monday, and he said, you're not gonna believe it, it's going to be phenomenal, and of course it is. And I'm counting twenty names here, and David, you talk about having a different hat when you come to talk to us about whether you're talking about emergency services, or if you're emergency management, or recreation, as you did today as well. And so I think we need about seventy hats, if that's the case. All these people are wearing a lot of different hats, and we're truly appreciative. But what's most extraordinary about it is the extremely thoughtful use of taxpayer money, which is what we're here to do. We're here to take care of our residents, and you're providing them with safety, with access, with recreation, sustainability, with adaptable, adaptive playgrounds, so many things that other communities couldn't even imagine doing, and you're doing it at a twenty-five percent cost savings across the board, because you guys are all wearing three to four hats each. I know what it takes for you to come here all the time, and to do that while doing so many other things is extraordinary. So we wanted sincerely thank you for maximizing the funds the way you do, and not just making an extraordinary product, but thinking about the pocket where it comes from and utilizing grants so well for people to have a better life here. And it's noticed and appreciated, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, back, yeah, you better get right back to work right away.
We want that golf course open by August, by the way.
Oh, oh goodness. The city council would respectfully like to go down the slide first, when the pool is open, if that could be arranged. That's really all we're gonna ask for. Thank you.
I don't know if we can handle Carl, he's too big.
Thank you.
Does that slide come in double wide?
You might need to reinforce it for Carl, but if you could arrange for that, that would be lovely. Thank you. Next, we have comments for the public tonight of two comment cards for items not on the agenda. May I please call Dana Middleton to the podium, if you could state your name and address, please?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dana Middleton, and I live at one oh two Delano Way in Palm Beach Gardens, Florida. I am a Palm Beach Gardens resident, and I'm local business owner, and I am also the current chair of the PJ Corridor Association. I just wanted to say thank you to the city council and the city. What a timely presentation, and thank you for the capital improvement projects presentation. We have an upcoming State of the City address next Wednesday, May eleventh, which will be presented by our mayor, Chelsea Reed. And we look forward to, and hopefully that will be incorporated into the presentation, which is going to be attended by local business owners as well as residents. It's open to everybody, so we're really excited that it was timely and it was in here. We always look forward to the yearly presentation. There's so much going on in our wonderful city, and we just want to make another, you know, thank you to the city, to the police and fire. You keep us safe all the time. The city folks are always wonderful to work with, and it's a great place to live, work, and play. So thank you very much, and we look forward to next week, so thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ramona Bean, please. If you could come to the podium, state your name and address, thank you.
For the record, Ramona Bean. I reside at fifty-four thirty-nine Cicada Way in Palm Beach Gardens. Good evening, Mary Reed, and city council, and everyone else in here listening. My public comment tonight is actually not on the agenda. In fact, the problem I've noticed, and I'm sharing with you tonight, was initially rejected in its planning stages by our planning and zoning team, and I'd actually like to say thank you on behalf of others for that. The reason I feel compelled to comment on this today, however, is because I've been hearing from a lot of residents, not just in the last few months about it, but even the past couple days, somebody from Bay Hill Estates texted me today. There's a proposal, or has been a proposal anyway, regarding two land parcels that are in question off of North Lake on the southern side, next to Bay Hill Estates, I think in front of Rustic Lakes, also across from Osree Isles, and our city's beautiful Sand Hill Crane Golf Course. The two parcels were zoned for commercial medical purposes. However, housing developers got an eye on it, and wants these parcels to be rezoned. That way they can properly purchase from the current landowners, and therefore be able to look at building possible townhome-like residential units. And this is, of course, condensed housing in an already congested traffic area. While this is, of course, still being vetted by city staff, and like I said, it's not an agenda item tonight, I think it's important, we're aware, that there is a growing opposition about it, really vocal, and it includes a petition site with growing dissent. As elected city council members, I guess I'm just imploring to you to continue what you do, which is listening to your residents. I want you to keep your eyes, ears, and heart really, and your mind open to this when it comes to folks that are upset about something. Of course, thank you for already responding to everybody. I already, today, you guys responded to me, some of you, so thank you. I know there have been residents that have been emailing city staff and everything as well. I also wanted to be clear, I do not have a problem with developing property. This is not a rejection of that in our city, this is what we're known for. I actually encourage us to be open to positive brainstorming, forward-thinking. With an area like this, thirty acres combined, the city of Palm Beach Gardens are an eco-friendly entity, could actually look at it for something else, like maybe a green commuter area. Think of having bikes available for our city residents to go down North Lake Boulevard, because it's a long stretch. Maybe EV charging stations, you know, the high-charging ones, especially for all our folks out in Avonier that are gonna be living there soon. So, anyway, ultimately, good ideas can be born from contentious moments, so I just, I find when our residents are saying no to some old ideas, maybe we can think better. And just thank you so much for everything you guys already do and listening to me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Next, we have the city manager report. Ron, do you have a report this evening?
Just three items to bring to your attention. This past Saturday, the police department conducted a drug take-back day, and happy to announce that they collected a hundred and eighty-four pounds of expired prescription medication, ten pounds of over-the-counter medication, and twenty EpiPens. So, we appreciate your efforts, chief, and we thank you very much. Also, a reminder that we do have a Memorial Day ceremony Monday, May thirtieth, at nine AM, right here in the plaza. Want to invite everyone out to that event. And the third thing I would like to bring to your attention is that this time, I would like to ask that Candace Temple, our public relations and media director, and also producer and filmmaker, to the table, along with Keith Breyer, our chief, fire chief. They have a program they'd like to present to the council.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council. For the record, Keith Breyer, fire chief. As you know, May is Stroke Awareness Month, and eight years ago, the city and the fire department really started an exhaustive campaign to go out and educate our residents on the importance of recognizing the signs and symptoms of stroke. So at the time, eight years ago, when we were looking at our data, one of the things that we found that was very disturbing was, the average person was waiting about three and a half hours from the time their symptoms occurred to the time they called nine-one-one. So, as we know from past stroke education, about two million brain cells die every minute, brain cells that you will not get back. So, eight years ago, we launched this campaign during the month of May, which included going out and doing education, much like we're doing this month. So we will be out at the Green Market all the way through to the twenty-second. We'll be doing stroke screenings, we'll be doing stroke education for people to understand recognizing the signs and symptoms of stroke, and how important it is to call nine-one-one. Because the quicker we can get there, and we can stabilize you and get you to an appropriate facility, the less likely your deficit is gonna be for a stroke. So just a few facts, every forty seconds in the United States, somebody has a stroke. Every three and a half minutes, somebody dies from a stroke, and it is the leading cause of disability in the United States. So, unlike other fire departments, when we get this data, rather than just sitting on it and hoping for the best, we want to be proactive, we want to get out there. And it has really, truly been a team effort. We're gonna go around, we'll be to all the different divisions within the city for our employees to do stroke risk assessments, and our own Chief Basset will be doing a stroke awareness lecture on Tuesday, May thirty-first, from six to eight here in our EOC. I did leave some flyers up at the front. He'll be joined by the director of the ER for Palm Beach Gardens Medical Center, and an interventional neurologist from St. Mary's. So we encourage everybody to come out. With that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Candace to talk a little bit more of our public outreach.
Thank you, Chief Breyer. Chief Breyer mentioned eight years ago, and that's about when I started here at the city of Palm Beach Gardens. He was not the fire chief at that time. And I will say that I knew from the first time I spoke to him about stroke awareness that he was very passionate about it. The entire fire department was very passionate about spreading the word, getting the message out, and that inspired me, frankly, in what I do, which is, it varies from day to day, but part of what I do is listen to departments, listen to their communication goals, and try to find a way to help them engage the public. We did our first stroke awareness PSA about five years ago. That one was called Time Equals Brain, you may remember it. It was a PSA with testimonials of stroke survivors across many ages and genders and demographics, and it was an award-winning PSA. We won a Savvy Award from three CMA with that, so that was a lot of teamwork and really proud of it. So about a year ago, I had an idea that, you know, just came to me, and I didn't have enough time to pull it off. So I'm really excited that the time has arrived, because I've been sitting on this idea for a whole year. We launched this yesterday in honor of Star Wars Day, and it's a piece that we call Stroke Wars, and you may see some familiar faces that will soon be off to Hollywood for sure.
Every forty seconds, someone in America suffers a stroke. Sometimes, they mistake it for something else.
I remember, master. They often ignore the symptoms or go to sleep.
Correct. And every minute they wait increases the risk of brain damage, disability, or death.
Time equals brain.
Correct again, my apprentice. We must master the skills if we hope to defeat a stroke. Do you remember your training?
I, I think so.
Just remember, balance, eyes, face, arms, speech, time.
Balance, eyes, face, arm, speech, time. What if I forget?
You may be the galaxy's only hope. Just remember, be fast.
Be fast. Balance, eyes, face, arm, speech, time. Be fast.
You don't know the power of a stroke.
Your training is complete. Let's be fast. You may experience a loss of balance, headache, or dizziness.
Eyes. You may have blurred vision.
Sudden weakness or numbness in the face, especially on one side.
Arm. Sudden weakness or numbness in an arm or leg, especially on one side of the body.
Impressive.
Every minute that a person suffers from a stroke, two million brain cells will die. They need immediate medical intervention.
I'm ready. Let's be fast and finish the fight.
You may be the only hope. Master the skills, learn the warning signs, and be fast. Master the skills, learn the warning signs, and be fast.
Thank you for watching that. Hopefully, if that was your first time seeing it, you have taken away some new knowledge, and you are going to master the skills. I let it roll through the credits, because it was really a team effort, and there were a lot of names there that were city employees, including some assistant chiefs, who helped us with the fire training tower. That's where we shot this, in our very own fire training tower. We smoked it out with our own smoke machine. We used everything that we had at our disposal. And we will be showing that through the end of the month, as we recognize Stroke Awareness Month. And now, I think the mayor has a special presentation? Or maybe? Oh.
We have been in touch with the Screen Actors Guild in Hollywood, California. And we've been authorized to present the Oscar to John Bohm, Assistant to the City Manager.
Thanks, John. Thank you.
Hey, John, can we get your autograph before it's too late?
Okay, that was, that was great. And that was "May the Fourth Be With You." I'm sure everyone heard that yesterday quite a lot. And I called John right away and said, even my 19-year-old thought it was cool. So, if you can impress a teenager that loves Star Wars, you guys did a great job. Thank you so much. So, next is our consent agenda. Would anyone on council like to pull anything from consent? I just have one item. Hearing none, I will be pulling consent item letter BB. And Patty, if you could please... Oops, sorry. It is.
I'd like to make a motion to pass, to pass these, Consent Agenda minus item double B.
I will second that.
All right, so, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, none. Motion passes, 5-0. Thank you so much. So, we will be asking Patty to read us proclamation for Professional Municipal Clerk's Week. Actually, you don't need to read it if you don't want to. We're doing it mostly just to thank you. So, Patty is the glue that keeps us together. And to have the opportunity to have a whole week to thank her and her staff for everything that they do. So, Patty, on behalf of our city council, we'd like to say thank you so much for everything. And that's why we polled it, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Oh, my gosh.
Patty, I'll help you keep that alive, too.
Good, I'll need you to. Thank you all so much. I really appreciate this. Your support is just overwhelming, and I, that was very generous. Thank you so much. And I've got a wonderful team, and I'll share this with them tomorrow.
We don't know how you do it all. Many, many hats worn by you as well, we really appreciate it.
And my entire team. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, so, if nothing else is being polled, can I get motion and a second to approve the consent agenda? Oh, just do BB. Oh, sorry, I apologize.
I'll make a motion to accept BB.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion passes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, 5-0. Thank you, guys, for your patience. Next, we have public hearings. So, tonight, we are holding quasi-judicial hearings on the following case. Resolution 23 of 2022, Site Plan Approval for Pod 15 Within the Avenir Plan Community Development. This means that the city council is required by law to base its decision on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witness who testifies tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentation and will be permitted in the order of the witness's appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer written comments, please fill out a card and give it to our city clerk. The city clerk will now swear in all persons who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of these cases.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Thank you. With that, I will be... We're going to begin with Ordinance 5? I'm sorry, one second. All right, thank you. Ordinance 5, and if the clerk could read the title.
Ordinance 5, 2022. In ordinance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter 78 Land Development Regulations at Section 78-159, permitted uses, minor and major conditional uses, and prohibited uses to exempt city-owned public safety communication towers from the requirements of Note 64, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter 78 Land Development shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a separability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Thank you. I'll open the hearing. Staff presentation tonight, we have Brett Leone. Nice to see you.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. For the record, Brett Leone, he's senior planner with the city. Here to present on its first reading, Ordinance 5. The request before you all tonight is a city-initiated land development regulations text amendment to exempt city-owned public safety towers from the requirements of Note 64 for the permitted uses. The reason for this request is that the location and design do factor in providing adequate levels of service for emergency response throughout our city. And with the anticipated growth for our city, it's important that we maintain those levels of service that are currently being provided. So, the proposed code changes are specific to these two sections on the screen, highlighted in the underlying text. Specifically, Section D under Note 64, that sets forth the exemption of the city-owned public communication towers, and also adds in some language there that third-party telecommunication towers are not to be permitted unless brought before council and approved by you all. Second is Note K regarding setbacks and separations. The requirements of this section require that the proposed communication towers be set back certain distances from property lines, as well as set back from other telecommunication towers, irrespective of jurisdictional boundaries. And that separation is a mile, so it is a pretty big buffer around there. So, and in addition, the code doesn't separate public safety towers from third-party telecommunication towers. So, by doing this, it allows the city to locate towers where they're needed to, again, keep the levels of service. Planning and zoning board recommended approval at their April 12th meeting, and staff recommends approval as well. And that is my presentation.
Thank you. I don't have any comments, comment cards on this, so we'll proceed. I'm going to close the hearing. Can I get a motion and a second to approve, please?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to approve Ordinance 5, 2022.
I'll second.
Thank you. I'd like to bring it back for discussion since... Why don't we go ahead? Marcy, you're lit up there, go ahead.
No, I'm...
You're in? Okay, any questions? Any discussion from council?
It's clear to me.
Very clear. Excellent. Thank you so much. So, here are no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, 5-0. Thank you very, very much. Great. So, we're going to just go on ahead to Resolution 23. Would our clerk please read the title?
Resolution 23, 2022. A resolution in the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving site plan for 562-lot, single-family residential subdivision, common-area landscaping, architectural floor plans and elevations, and typical lot landscaping on approximately 256.7 acres, more or less, within the residential parcel, Parcel A, in the Avenir Plan Community Development, PCD, that is generally located on the north side of Northlake Boulevard, east of Greatview Boulevard, west of Bay Hill Drive, and south of Beeline Highway. As more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing waivers, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Thank you, Patty. I will open the hearing. Any expertises on this matter?
I do have an expertise. I have had a few conversations with Ken Tuma in passing. I also met with, and had some conversations with Rosa Schechter. Danny Manny met with Ken, Kevin Rattery, Alan, Larry, and Tanya McConnell.
Thank you.
That's it.
Any other expertise?
I have none on this project.
Mark?
None on this project.
Carl? And I have none as well. Thank you very much. Do we have a presentation? Yes, we do. Hello, Mr. Tuma. Have you been sworn in?
I have been sworn in. Good evening, Ken Tuma with Urban Design Studio.
No pressure, Ken. After Carl's comments, no pressure.
I know, my... I don't even know where to start. So, after, good evening again. I was, yes, sir. So, I wasn't sure if I was going to have 562 lots or 562 slides. So, with that being said, good evening again, Ken Tuma with Urban Design Studio. My address is 610 Klimata Street, West Palm Beach, Florida, 33401. I've been sworn in, Miss Mayor. Thank you for having me here this evening. Here again this evening on behalf of Landstar. This property, Pod 15, which is 256 acres, is under contract to Geo Homes. Their representatives are in the audience tonight also. So, we have the whole team here can answer any questions that you have. I'm going to walk through a presentation, which is a little bit less than 562 slides, but it's probably about 20 slides. So, first thing, you all are familiar with Avenir and the location. The subject site, though, identified here in red, is Pod 15, which is a 256-acre parcel of land, which we're proposing to place 562 new homes on. Again, aerial view, you can see it identified here in yellow, Pod 15. It is west of Coconut Boulevard and north of Avenir Drive. Coconut Boulevard, just for your frame of reference, if you haven't been out there, is constructed now all the way to the preservation area. So, Coconut is constructed from the roundabout to the preservation area, and is also paved going south. It's not all the way to Northlake yet, but it's getting very close. And also, there's a significant amount of families that live out at Avenir when you get the opportunity to go out there. So, the site that is in front of you tonight, or the request, is a site plan approval, architectural models, lot landscaping, and two waivers. I'm going to walk you through the site plan in detail. So, first, the site plan, and I'm going to spend some time on this slide. The site plan, as I said earlier, is 562 lots on 256 acres. This is Coconut Boulevard on the right-hand side of the screen, and Avenir on the south side. So, the primary entrance is here off of Coconut Boulevard. So, as you drive off of Northlake or Avenir Drive, you enter into the roundabout, which is constructed today. When you drive out there, that's the roundabout, has the ovals, or has the royals all the way around it. As you pull, you're driving up Coconut Boulevard. On the right-hand side is Pod 9. You approved that a few weeks ago for a different developer, building another, a different community. You pull in, you will have 300 feet of stacking. You will then pull into the entry. There will be a man gatehouse, different than the other parcels that you've seen. So, it'll actually be a man gatehouse. There'll be a beautiful entry feature, over 300 feet of stacking internal as you come in and drive down the main spine road into the clubhouse, or into the guardhouse. There'll also be a drive-by lane in that guardhouse also. It'll be a man gatehouse. There'll be some significant entry features, I'll show you on future slides, that flank both sides of the road, that have water, oolite, and stone tied into them. And then, different than the other parcels, you'll notice as you drive down this road, you come into a roundabout where there'll be special identification landscape in the middle. There'll also be hardscape, there'll also be pavers and hardscape features. But as you drive through, the whole project has a spine road going through the center of the project, which is different than what you've seen on the other parcels. The spine road's a bit wider. It's an 80-foot-wide right-of-way, but it's a standard two-lane road. But on both sides, as you go down, there's a three-foot-high berm and a 20-foot landscape buffer on both sides. So, it creates a nice separation between the residential parcels and this major, or this roadway that goes through the center of the site. You'll also notice that there are special paver treatments going throughout the center of the site. There's also pedestrian connection points and pedestrian walkways, and also, there are special view corridors throughout it. As you go further down, you'll see this Future West Recreation Center. That's not in front of you this evening. However, there's a condition of approval that we have to submit that within 60 days of this application. We've already had a pre-application meeting with staff. What's being proposed in that future recreation area is approximately a 25,000-square-foot clubhouse, significant amount of tennis courts, and of course, lots and lots of pickleball, too. And there'll be pools, currently, there's two pools planned, lots and lots of pickle. A lot of design has gone into that, working with your staff, and that will come before you in several months from now. But the design of that was focused on how it would work within the community. One key feature, though, that recreation center is just not for this parcel of land. It is for everything west of Coconut Boulevard, except Panther National, which has its own clubhouse, and a future age-restricted community, which you'll see coming up sometime in the future. So, what we've done from a design standpoint is we've incorporated a parking lot here into that west recreation that's part of this site plan. That parking lot provides both golf cart parking and vehicle parking. It also has a male kiosk in it. The purpose of that is so the residents of Pod 15, GL's community, can park in that parking lot, drive their golf cart, or drive their car there, and not go out on Avenir Drive or Coconut Boulevard. It's basically captured, internal in the site. Some other key elements of this site plan, the secondary entrance feature, which is located here off of Avenir Drive, it's not a secondary feature. It's not, it's not a man gate, but it is a gate that allows for both residents and guests. And I'll show you a little bit more in detail in a few minutes. And then, you'll notice there's parks spread throughout. The lot sizes, there are two lot sizes, 50 by 130 and 62 by 130 feet of depth. So, just a quick view of what the main entrance feature is, the significant entrance feature. It's about 70 feet long. You'll see the water, the stone, the stucco, the water elements, oops, gosh, Garrett, the water elements coming up from the ground. And then, as you pull up, this is where the manned guardhouse is. You'll notice on the right-hand side, the bypass, or the residence lane, there isn't any portage share or covering. It's just available to drive through, but there's also a gate here. And that gate would be a fob-operated gate, whereas this is a man entrance for guests, and for guests coming to the community. The next gate, all the way on the other side, or on the left, on the south side, is not a man gate. It has a beautiful entry feature, identifying Avenir using the oolite stone, consistent with the rest of Avenir. It's a gated feature. That gated feature will then have fobs associated, and the ability to have a call box to be able to call in if you're a guest. So, it's a full entry. It's just not manned. The other side is manned. There are a couple other egress points throughout the project, which I'll show you in a few minutes. But through the design and working our way through it, one of the things we realized is the spine road's long. It's a big, it's a large parcel of land, and so, we've created some pedestrian focal points with some guidance from your staff, and also from our clients. There are these pedestrian focal points, kind of that view corridor, looking out over the lakes. When you drive in the parcels 6, 7, and 8, you'll notice that feature where you can look out down the long vistas of the lake. Same concept here, just on a smaller scale, because the lakes are smaller. Also, there are, there's traffic calming throughout the entire community. That traffic calming identified in red. In those areas, we're actually adding an additional feature, which is a flashing light to let people know that there's a pedestrian crossing there. Significant amount of people living on the north side, living on the south side, everyone hopefully going to go to the Avenir Recreation, Avenir West Recreation Center. And hopefully, everyone will go there, and that's the purpose of having that. Also, on a slide coming up, I will identify where we're doing land, where we're doing bridges. There's a significant amount of bridges... There's a significant amount of bridges connecting the community all to the recreation center, both here and here, and the more details coming up on that. Here are the details. Identified in red in the oval are the location of the bridges that are being proposed across the lakes. And the purpose of that is to create a walking trail. That walking trail ultimately begins at one end of the community, ends at the recreation center. Same thing. While the west side doesn't have a bridge, it all has a connection points that Avenue is expected to have. In fact, on the spine road, I forgot to mention the spine road, which has that three-foot-high berm and all, and it'll be lined with royals all the way down. It also has an eight-foot sidewalk on both sides. Community features, they're are spread throughout the community. Significant amount of male kiosks, play equipment. We've met all the requirements as outlined in the Avenue Design Guidelines. The street trees for the residential parcels, the street trees for the residential parcel. There are two, a pigeon plum and a Japanese blueberry. Again, the spine road will be more of the palm tree design. Model homes. So diving into architecture for a minute. There are 12 total models being proposed. Seven of those models are for the 50-foot-wide lots, and five models are for the 62-foot-wide lot. Within those models, there are four different architectural styles. So there's four architectural styles for each one of those 12 models, so four times 12 is 48. They're, they're, the different styles are contemporary, modern, contemporary coastal, and contemporary Mediterranean. And then there are also six to eight color schemes per style. And then finally, as you've seen in the other Avenue parcels, the anti-monotony standards that are consistent with the other parcels. And I, so I hate saying you've seen consistent with other parcels, but this is Pod 15. So a lot, some of this is a bit repetitive, but it is consistent and, but the architecture here is a little more unique, is unique. So first thing, you'll see the streetscape of 50-foot lots. This is a streetscape. You'll notice both a series of one, one-story and two-story buildings. The next one is a 62-foot lots, again, a series of one- and two-story buildings. So this is the first model. I'm going to walk you through about 10 models, just in three-dimensional, so you kind of get a feel of what it looks like. This is the modern style. You can see there's a corner window, which you can't see. It's hidden here. You have the horizontal and vertical use of stone. The roof is a little bit less pitched, meaning it's angles a little bit less on the modern style. This is a Mediterranean style, kind of that standard Mediterranean with barrotile roofs, corbels. You can see the glass in the door, and then the use of stucco features, kind of that Mediterranean style. This is another modern style, lower-pitched roof, two-story modern, lower-pitched roof. Here's the corner window that you couldn't see in the other slide. There are corner windows in this two-story, and then the use of glass at the entry. The contemporary style has these tall vertical columns are part of their design. They have these simple doors. In this case, this door has a quick pass-through of glass. And then you'll notice the use of stucco here. This is a coastal style, a little bit, the coastal style. And then you'll notice the use of siding, brackets, and corbels in that coastal style. And then this is a contemporary style again. The Mediterranean style, again, with the barrotile roofs. The modern style with the, with the windows and the glass and the vertical and horizontal use of stone. Coastal style, traditional corbels, brackets, siding, shutters. Another more, another modern style. And so the next item is the lot landscaping plans. Consistent with the rest of Avenue, we're required to provide lot landscaping. And so how the lot landscaping works, there's a minimum amount required on each lot. There's then a set of trees and shrubs that you're allowed to choose from. And there's a minimum that your staff has set, working with the developer's landscape architect, to come up with the landscaping plans. However, that doesn't preclude the homeowner from buying more. It just sets a minimum basis for those landscape plans. So on the screen in front of you, I'm not going to read, read them. Are the palm options and the tree options for a traditional lot? And then, so on the left-hand side of your screen is the landscaping package, the minimum landscaping package that comes with a 50-foot lot. And the right-hand side of your screen is a minimum landscape package that comes with a 62-foot lot. In the fourth, in the middle of it is a 3D conceptual of what it looks like. In this case, you don't see the street tree. There's a street tree sitting here, but you'll notice the palms on both sides creating kind of that, the corner. And then at the rear of the house, there'll be two canopy trees or shade trees. And the same thing on this home also, where there'll be palm trees, canopy trees on both sides, and then also a street tree. Waivers. We have two waivers in front of you this evening. The first waiver is a waiver that you've seen throughout Avenue, and I'd like to report that it's working very well. There are now homes that live, that are next to one another that have this situation, and I had the chance to go look at it, and it's working very well. And that waiver is a waiver to reduce the requirement for setback for mechanical equipment. And so in exchange for that reduction in setback for mechanical equipment, we're requesting that as a waiver, you are requiring us to place the equipment all on one side. So instead of having your AC compressor on one side and your pool equipment on the other, it requires all mechanical equipment to be on one side. So therefore, one side of the home is clear for a five-foot area versus having that equipment on both sides. It's worked very well. The second waiver is a waiver because GL Homes is doing some very large homes here. They have options for five bedrooms on three models with dens, or potentially have dens that could convert to, um, two bedrooms. So there are five bedrooms. What we're requesting is a waiver of one parking spot. The way the code works is it's one parking spot per bedroom. In this case, because there are five bedrooms and the changes that are occurring, and more people are working at home, you know, you have kids coming and going throughout your life. But having five parking spots is too much, and so we're requesting to go to four parking spots. There are also 48 on-street parking spots that are spread throughout the community, and there are also additional golf carts throughout the site. This is the view of the waiver in detail. And then this is a bit more information about the second waiver, which is the five bedrooms, four parking spots. And that is my presentation this evening. Have the whole team here have all kinds of information and prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ken. Do we have a staff presentation as well? All right. Thank you. I don't believe we have any comment cards, so I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing. Can I get a motion and a second to approve, please?
I'll make a motion to approve. Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. Let's bring it back for discussion. Let's start with Carl.
Thank you. So as we approve all these things in Avenue, Ken, it's kind of like golf cart friendly, where they can, you know, go to and from Sand Hill and so on. In these particular slides, where are you going to put the golf carts? Are the sidewalks 12 feet?
Yes, sir. So thank you for that good question. So the sidewalks that are along the main road here are eight-foot wide on both sides. However, consistent with the rest of Avenue, the outside sidewalks are 12 feet on the south side.
Okay.
And eight foot on the north side. And then here, I believe it's 12 feet on the west side and eight feet on the east side, but.
Okay. So I know we're, every developer in there, including GL, they're building a really good product. But myself, probably like the rest of you guys, got your insurance bill for your roof.
Yes, I did.
And it's ridiculous. So why are we still doing barrel tile? And I'm not a developer. I'm not an engineer. But roofs are lasting 20 years, and I live in a divasta home, and I'm 18, and I know my roof's fine. But in 20 years, they're going to, you know, so what are we doing to move forward to the, maybe it's more of a staff prob, um, question? And a vision to move these roofs so these insurance companies don't steal money from everybody to go more towards a 100-year vision or, or for a roof, longer-lasting? How long are these roofs for?
I could just go from my personal experience because I had the same problem. I have a three-dimensional roof at our house, and of course, our insurance went up significantly. At 20 years, we had to replace our roof. But lots changed on barrel tile roofs over time. I mean, the hurricane coats have changed, and the way that they function and last is longer than they did 20 years ago.
But what's the, in 20 years from now, are they, are these people going to be in the same predicament that we're all in these days?
I, I can't answer that.
I mean, it's going to be tough because these aluminum roofs that are, that are coming out are guaranteed for a lot longer than 20 years. I'm wondering how, I know the governor is doing some sort of emergency session to address this situation. But I was just wondering, are we going a direction to make these roofs longer-lasting? Or is this a direction the city needs to go to push people in to get better roofs, or what?
Councilmember, if I may, I'm happy to answer that.
I don't know, Ken. I'm just talking.
I mean, I know, but I need to do a little bit of research before I jump and answer that in a public hearing. But I will certainly get back to you about that, and I'll probably grab Scott, Scott Danyowski and ask him to be part of the conversation.
Yeah. I mean, maybe it's something, the, you know, I'm, I'm one person. I can't push anybody to do anything. But the amount of money that everybody collectively is spending for insurance is ridiculous. And maybe it comes down to the developments to make a better product so they last longer, so everybody doesn't get ripped off after 20 years, you know? But other than that, I love it. It's great. It's good for Avenue. It's a different flavor other than what we got going on there, and I like the project. I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. Mark?
Well, I appreciate the golf cart access. That's always something that people are going to want to, you know, we encourage people to not necessarily get in their cars and drive throughout Avenue if they live and work within it. I did have a question. I didn't think about it the other day during my agenda review. Why have one entrance with a manned security and the other side, the other entrance without?
Sure. I, I can address that, or GL's here can address it. But it comes down to a cost of operation rights. So it's very expensive to have a manned gate. And GL's had success with having one entry be the manned gate, which is your main gate. And then a second one is more of a secondary access point. Also, I forgot the note going through the presentation. I'm sorry, just going to go a little off-topic. There are two secondary egress points here and here that are egress points only, and I apologize, Councilmember Merciano, but I forgot to mention that during the hearing.
Those are just for residents.
Just for residents leaving the community, but I did not point that out to the board.
So with the security, does that mean there's going to be more than one security guard on-site at any given time? I would assume there's going to be more than one.
Good evening, Council Mayor. For the record, my name is Kevin Rattery, Vice President with GL Homes. We typically have during construction, um, one manned person at the gate, and then we have typically have a roving security. Once we've gotten operational and we're starting to close homes, we gauge that based on whether or not we're having any issues in the community as to whether or not we have multiple. To answer your first question, which was why only one? That's because most of our communities are designed where we have a primary entry, which is for guests and residents and deliveries. And we have a secondary entry, which is just for residents. Staff requested as part of the initial review of this project that we make the secondary access on Avenue, both guest and resident, and we made that change.
So there would only be one security guard on-site at any given time, once everything is constructed?
That's correct.
Okay. And as far as the, the water and the lakes, they do connect with the greater Avenue water, um, water tables and what have you?
That's, that's correct. It actually flows to the east.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Michelle?
Well, I believe this is the largest pod by number of houses so far that we're being asked to consider. To me, it was beautifully designed, and then the houses are distinctly different from the other pods we've approved. Yet, at the same time, they blend seamlessly with what the overall vision of Avenue is. And I think, uh, right now, the roof structure, the way they are designed fits with that as well. I believe there was only, maybe Panther National, the roof was, was different, but otherwise. So, uh, I really did not have any specific questions. I noticed also on this property that most of the houses do have water views. And that was a nice touch, too, to have that much green space, water space, to break up the size of the number of the houses in there. So I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Marcy?
Thank you. Couple things. I have a question in regards to one of your slides, which was in regards to the pedestrian crossings.
Yes, ma'am.
You had selected two particular crossings or intersections for those lit crossings. How come those two?
Yeah. It's way back.
Yes.
Yeah. So a couple items. So the, this particular intersection, the thought process was just its general location being able to split, split mid-block where the traffic was going through. And then this one, because of its location to the parking lot across the street from the male kiosk.
I understand that one. I was curious why it wasn't the one next to it also, because that seemed to have a lot of traffic and lots, and it's a big intersection.
Traffic calming for the overall row was the intent.
Okay. So you wanted to spread it out, that's why. Got it. Okay. And then Kevin had mentioned deliveries, uh, being, uh, provided for on the main gate. So does that mean that there's no deliveries permitted on the other or the secondary gate? And if so, does that, or is there signs that, um, that specify no deliveries so that everyone knows?
Kevin Rattery, GL Homes. For the record, I said GL's typical developments have the secondary entry as resident-only, and your staff, or your staff asks us to make the secondary entry, both resident, guest, and delivery.
Okay. I didn't hear the delivery part on the secondary.
Just to clarify that comment. So thank you.
Okay, good. And so then, I promised not to comment on the landscape palette. I liked it. I even had to look up one plant because I was unfamiliar, and I think that was because Chuckie Nettie was trying to keep me on my toes. I do have two requests. One is, um, obviously, this is not directly adjacent to the Economic Development Parcel, but it is across the way from the Economic Development Parcel. And I would really appreciate having the transparency of the notice, similar to the school board notice, and also similar to the, um, airport notice, and have it somewhat memorialized in this presentation and ask the developer to provide that notice in their docs.
We, we have no problem with that.
Thank you. And then the other request was in regards to the median that's on Coconut Boulevard. And I know you're aware of that, but my colleagues are not. But when I was looking at it, um, the median is one continuous median from the guardhouse to Coconut. And my thought was, a lot of people forget things. They want to do a turn, you know, they forget their keys, forget their cellphone, and they have to make a turn to go back to the house and/or have a safe stopping point out of the lanes of traffic. And rather than doing that U-turn, um, be, doing that U-turn in an unsafe situation right at the intersection of Coconut, it would be best, in my opinion, to have a median break in that long median. In addition, if someone were to be driving from Coconut, because some of our parcels in Avenue are not gated, but this one is and others are as well, if someone were to come in, turn into this development and realize, oh, I didn't mean to go into this development, they would be able to do a U-turn and go back out of the, before having to go through the gate, the manned gate, um, and then wait in the line to just make a U-turn. So I would like to have a very simple median break to provide that safe U-turn.
Staff would support that, and that could be done at the permit level as well.
Yeah. Thank you. And I want to.
My only request would be, we certainly would do, take a look at it. If for some reason that it got more involved than what I think your expectation are, we'd like the opportunity not to do it, but we have no problem doing that. It's not an issue. We looked at it.
Absolutely. And it's very simple, and absolutely it can be done between now and the permit.
Thank you.
Or at the permit time. Thank you. And I guess that that would be memorialized also in this public hearing to make it official. So I guess with that said, I'd like to make a substitute motion to approve the, if I have to, to approve it with those two changes.
I'll second that. Is that necessary, Max?
Make a motion with those two changes?
Correct. Correct. Do I need to make a substitute motion to add those two changes?
Well, what you would probably do is, the easiest thing to do is to ask the motion maker to repeal their motion and then, or just ask them to agree to amend their motion with those changes.
Okay.
I will amend my motion for the two changes.
Thank you so much.
And does the second agree?
I need a second.
And I seconded it, so I will second it again.
So you agree.
Thank you.
All set?
All set, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Marcy, all right, I'll be brief, I want to thank you so much for doing the traffic calming ahead of time, it is wonderful to see everything set up for our residents to be safe and have so much access, by cart, foot, bike, and so many other ways that will provide trip capture within Avenir, which is, I know, something that's on everyone's mind, is as more and more people move to Avenir, what will be happening on our roads, and the only question I did have was regarding the waiver about the stacking of all the, of the AC in the pool, it sounds like it's going well in all the other previous houses that we've approved for it.
It has, it's working very well.
Okay, about, how many permits are we pulling, I think we talked about it briefly at my agenda review, I don't remember the number though.
There's about 30 families that live out there, I don't know.
There's 30 families living out there now?
Mayor, as of two weeks ago, my latest count was just over 200 permits I've been pulled.
Wow, all right, thank you very much, all right, any further discussion from our council, all right, here hearing no further discussion, I will ask all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five zero, thank you very much, great presentation, thank you guys so much for all your hard work.
And did you guys see the merry-go-round, by the way, when you were looking at that? That brought back lots of memories, didn't it?
All right, moving on to resolutions, if the clerk could please read the title for Resolution 26, 2022?
Resolution 26, 2022, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving art in public places for the PGA Station Plan Unit Development, PUD, Office Building Six, located on the east side of RCA Center Drive, south of PGA Boulevard, and west of alternate A1A, as more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Thank you very much, and I see we have a presentation. Hello.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, for the record, my name is Nicole Plunkett with Cotler &amp; Haring, tonight's proposal is an Art in Public Places approval request for PGA Station. Our applicant is PGA Building Six LLC, our developer Catafumo Companies, our artist Mark Fuller, who is here, landscape architects and planners Cotler &amp; Haring, and also our civil engineer Simmons &amp; White, tonight's request for Art in Public Places is for approval of Resolution 26, 2022, the applicant Building Six LLC is requesting the approval of the proposed Art in Public Places installation for the PGA Station PUD as approved through Resolution 62, 2021. Our artist for this Art in Public Places, Mark Fuller, as you've seen many of his art pieces for many, many years throughout the city, each public art installation is unique and based on the site itself, so he utilizes the state-of-the-art technologies and allows to really push the boundaries of the project to make each one special and unique, and this is special and unique to our project site tonight. The project location along PGA Boulevard, right in the central district of the TOD, and also within the heart of Palm Beach Gardens, where a lot of the redevelopment for many of the adjacent properties is happening, including the PGA Station itself, it has a very, very long history, this is just a representation of a lot of the approvals that have come through throughout City Council and throughout staff approval throughout the years, the most recent one is the Resolution 62, 2021, which came to you November 4th of 2021, and as a reminder, that one approved the PUD amendment for the construction of the residential apartments, the office building, and of course, the parking structure with the ground floor And so the AIPP that we are proposing for tonight, I wanted to give you an idea of where that is located within the PGA Station, and so we are, our art tonight is consisting of two areas, one is called the AIPP Iconic Bloom Structures, and those are located right on that axis of the Design Center Drive. We're also proposing what we're calling the AIPP Canopy, and I'm going to get into the details of those, but I just wanted to show you that we very intentionally located these art pieces, and you've seen a vision of what those look like with the approval that was approved back in November, we showed you what those art pieces were going to look like, and now they're really coming to fruition, and the idea was that we were thinking about them ahead of time to design them into the site plan approval that you previously approved. Also, within that site plan approval that you previously approved last year, connectivity throughout the site and the mobility of the site, the pedestrian experience was analyzed into great detail, and so this shows the many different ways that pedestrians and vehicles from primary and secondary movement throughout the site, and so with those art pieces that are identified here, they're along the main axes, they're along the main intersections, and they're really going to be used at a pedestrian level. The AIPP contributions requires 1% vertical construction costs, and so through this process, as typical with AIPP processes, we worked with staff to determine the requirement, and our proposed art not only meets it, but exceeds it. And taking a closer look as to where the location of these pieces are going to be, again, it's connected into the Office Building Six, the parking structure, and the adjacent Building Nine, so providing many different ways that the pedestrians of this site are going to be able to experience this art. This 3D rendering gives you an idea of a bit of the scale of these art pieces, so again, you've got the iconic blooms here, which really flank this main drive area and intersection of PGA Station, and then you have the crossover canopies to provide protection, and truly, it is functional art, it's beautiful, but it has a function behind it as well, which we've seen through many of the different types of art throughout the city as well. So the bloom structures themselves, they are two identical vertical elements, and they flank that primary intersection, which leads to the Office Building Parking Garage, and of course, the future rail station, so these structures are titled the Iconic Bloom, and they're comprised of aluminum tubes on top of a five-foot-tall concrete pedestal, each of the structures will be illuminated below with LED uplighting that you can see located within this graphic, and it's also located on the top as well to downlight, and so that play of light from the different angles of the sculptures allow movement of shadows as the sun sets and provides a bit of a play on the shadows as well, and it has fabric on the interior, and a structure was engineered for 175 mile-per-hour wind speed, and it has a height of 34 feet, four inches, and compared to a human scale, it truly is a large scale, however, when you compare it to the size of the adjacent buildings, the scale is quite appropriate for this, this particular intersection. And looking to the art canopy, the art canopies are very, very quite cool, and we have a material sample board here, which we'll be able to pass around and show you what it looks like, but what it is, is it's an artistic interpretation of a vine pattern with playful curbs thematically unite the overhead canopy panels with the structural support elements, and really, the pattern that you see there, it mimics the effect of a trellis garden walk, it'll be screen printed to the canopy with UV protection to prevent any sort of long-term fading. Also, the canopy supports that you see within the graphic here, play off of the structures for the bloom as well, and so there's a consistency within the art feature. And the next couple of graphics are just a couple of 3D renderings, which show the arts, both the blooms in the mental, in the middle, and also the overhead canopies as well, and how they play into different scales and different pedestrian accessways within the site, and also to show how it relates to the different scales of the building as well, and so those are just a couple of the graphics that we've come up with to show you that we've truly analyzed it at all different sides and angles and heights for this. The last thing I want to get into is that with the approval that you approved back in November, if you remember, the existing office building with the apartment building, there was a small little corridor, kind of a special little place that ran between these two buildings here, and the developer has incorporated art pieces within there, now those are not considered Art in Public Places, but there are other pieces of art around the site, and that's why I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the council as well, that kind of just providing above and beyond different experiences for the users of the site. And with that, that concludes my presentation, we do have Mark Fuller here tonight, and again, the sample material board that's being passed around, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have, thank you.
Thank you, you can tell we're pretty excited about the sample board up here, I apologize if we were distracted, and yeah, it's really exciting for us, thank you for bringing that, it's nice to have Mr. Fuller here, thank you for being here tonight, so let's see, do we have a staff presentation? All right, thank you, I don't have any comment cards, so could I get a motion and a second to approve Resolution 26, 2022?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 26, sorry.
I'll second.
Great, let's bring it back for discussion, I think we're all pretty excited, so let's have Marcy dig in.
Thank you.
I want to change landscaping, and I need four driveways.
Well, that's next, no, just a couple questions, and I did bring up one of the questions at our agenda review, which is in regards to the yellowing of the, the white, I can't remember the name of it, the white material, and I was told that it doesn't yellow, and I was curious how long, for the examples that were provided for, of that type, same type of material, what was the age, like, is it a new material, is it something that's been around for years, and we know that it's, you know, 10 years, and since hasn't had any yellowing or any of that?
I would love to bring our artist, Mark Fuller, up here to talk about that material sample. Put him on the spot.
And while he's coming, I'll ask my second question, which was in regards to the durability of it, like, if a royal palm frond falls on it, or if a palm frond falls on it, is it going to dent, is it, what is the hardening factor of it?
Mark Fuller, County Gator Trail, West Palm Beach, Florida, no, that material is a polycarbonate, I don't think you could break it or beat it to death with a hammer, it's very, very strong, as far as the yellowing thing we're talking about, polycarbonates will shift slightly, it's not like it turns yellow-yellow, but from my perspective, this material is designed and created for these uses, and it's used all over the world, it has been for decades, and it's perfectly suitable for this project, the durability is like unmatched, it'll last a long, long time.
If I can offer some expertise on polycarbonate plastic, it's in your glasses, it does not break, it will not discolor, it's something that's been used for a very long time, and it is approved anti-standards for, I can't remember how much weight load before it will crack, it may crack, but it will not break.
I need your name and address for that.
I'm just telling you, it's the perfect material for anything.
I appreciate that, no, it's absolutely beautiful, and I can't wait to see it in person.
Also, I'd like to point out that the, the green that you see sampled on there, that is not the actual printing, it was like cost prohibitive for me to do a little sample print for this, that is a simple vinyl mimicking the color on it, but that's basically, those bands are actually going to be much larger, so that pattern that you see there, you see the full pattern there, yes, that is represents a four-by-eight sheet, okay, just to give you some perspective on scale.
Oh yeah, perfect, thank you very much, I appreciate it, it's beautiful, I can't wait to see it.
Thank you, and Rochelle, since you're holding that, would you like to go ahead next?
No, and it's beautiful, and it's different from anything else we have in the city or that I have seen around the county, so.
Or anywhere.
Yeah, yeah, it's beautiful.
That's great.
Okay, great, Mark, any other chemical compounds?
Three milligrams thick, this polycarbonate, no, the, just the sheer amount of effort and excess, far above the requirements, has truly appreciated it, I mean, it's just going to make the project as a whole that much more valuable, that much more appealing to the people that are going to rent space within those areas, those that are going to live there, I mean, it's just going to make the whole area that much nicer, so I know there's a requirement, and sometimes builders bemoan that, but I think it's a fantastic thing, not only for the city, but for the project itself, so thanks to Dan and Joey for recognizing the benefit of art in the city and your projects.
Thank you, Carl.
I really can't say anymore, but, you know, we were all excited about this building when we approved it, because it's really, it's really moving things into the future, this area is going to be so busy, the art that's going to go into here, and I don't want to say I'm any more passionate than my fellow council members about art in public places, but my big mouth says it all the time, we need art around the city, and this is really, really moving forward, and as the PGA Station continues to develop, I want you to even challenge this, Joey, and getting more art in there, because it's going to be, it's going to be saturated with people, and it's just going to make it absolutely stunning, you know, hub of Palm Beach Gardens, so it's important that we will get it right, because Natalie will see to it, I know you know that, but we also want art all over the city, and, but just thank you guys, and I don't know why, I don't know why Dan's not here, so tell Dan I said thank you, and thank you to everybody's, everybody's team for really pushing this forward, because I like it a lot, so thank you.
Excellent, Carl, thank you, Marcy, you wanted to add?
Just one more thing, I want to thank you also for not cashing out the Art in Public Places and actually providing Art in Public Places, and all, I love functional art, and also, while you're at it, just please fix the insurance issue for Carl.
That's a horrible thing.
Make every roof out of polycarbonate, it's a simple thing.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to not let them say anything else, because they're just going to talk about insurance, but impressive, it's a, it's so beautiful, it's evocative of, you're bringing in so many other principles that we've, you know, the bus shelters that you've done, and the look with the vines coming through, and then the blooms that we have downtown at the gardens, and now over our bridge, and to have a bloom here again, so it's just exquisite, and it's a great representation of our signature city, thank you so much. All right, any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries five zero, thank you all so much for your presentation, and thank you, Dawn.
Thank you.
Congratulations on your impending retirement.
Aww.
All right, next is items for council discussion and action, and items of interest, I would like, I'll start on the other end, let's see, Carl, do you have anything that you'd like to share tonight?
I got a lot, but I'm just going to go with Mark's got hockey playoffs, so he's looking to get out of here.
All right, hockey, Mark, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Happy Mother's Day, everybody, on Sunday, and happy Mother's Day on Sunday.
All right, we'll take it, Rochelle.
I have nothing special tonight, so.
Oh, wow, all right, oh gosh, you guys, Marcy, go.
I'm sorry to inform you that I do have to bring one thing up, and also, I concur, I want to publicly wish all the moms out there happy Mother's Day, and in addition to that, I just wanted to bring you guys up to speed if you have not already heard, but I did attend the DOT meeting in regards to State Road 7, 10, and Northlake Beeline, I know Rochelle wanted to participate and was, ended up being late on her previous meeting and wasn't able to, but first, I just want to say that it raised so many flags and so many concerns that I had, this, this, no, this is the Beeline Improved Intersection for Beeline and Northlake Boulevard, and it's, obviously, we all know that it's a hybrid design, it's a hybrid design of a divergent interchange, which is somewhat confusing, and also, a continuous flow interchange, or intersection, I'm not saying, I would say interchange, but intersection is what I mean, which makes it a very unique intersection, and it also makes it very confusing, very, it's very interesting, however, the meeting itself, because it was a virtual meeting, it was very hard to follow for our Western constituents to follow, the public officials, the two public officials, including myself, that were on there. the public officials, the two public officials, including myself, that were on there, and everybody else, because the narrator was trying to do it through go-to meeting, but was also very, talking very quickly. And it made it very, very confusing for everybody to, you know, see where the car was moving and how the traffic was flowing. But in addition to that, I really feel like we need to bring this intersection, make people aware of what's going on, because this is going to happen quickly. 2023 is what they were talking, I believe, if it's my understanding. So I kind of talked to Ron a little bit about it in the past, just this past week, and I feel like we really need to do something. Have, and Ron, I look to you for a little assistance here, because we have experts, our, we just saw a huge presentation of so many experts right here in this room, and we have consultants. So maybe we need to look to them, figure out what we can do as far as provide input to maybe make it a little safer? Or maybe it's fine, but when I saw a bike lane in the middle of two through lanes and two turn lanes, and it's smack in the middle of all this traffic, and, and all they said was, we're going to have green paint to make it safe, it really threw a lot of red flags up in my mind, and I know maybe some others as well, so.
Can we ask for a charrette?
I, I'd like, yeah, I'd like to see what, maybe if you could think about it, ponder, or have some ideas of what we could possibly do.
Yes, I think we could eventually. I think that what we need to do is to have a presentation, clarification, and at the council meeting. I also think that we could have our traffic consultant take a look at what the proposal is and evaluate that. And let's get, get the facts and see if there are any alternatives that haven't been played out yet. So if we could get the consultant from FDOT to do a presentation, maybe our traffic consultant could examine what's going on there at that intersection that's proposed and give us their opinion. I think that'd be a good starting point.
I, that's nice.
Eventually, if we need to get the residents and the neighborhoods most impacted on that, we at least have some data at that point to present, or have someone present the data.
And maybe we can invite.
If that was acceptable, we'll look into it first.
I really think that that's a great idea. And if we could invite the, maybe some of the neighborhood, our neighborhoods, or to let them know, make it known that we're going to have this meeting whenever it's scheduled. Sorry, Todd, I know you have lots to do and lots on your plate. Give him another hat. Yeah.
Directing traffic is what he likes to do the most.
This is the first project, I think, of, of what they're planning.
It is.
Of the intersections. This is the first one.
It is, and I did ask them, and they said that they would be willing. On the record, they said that, so I appreciate you extending that invitation.
We'll look into it and try to get you back as soon as possible some information as to that, when that could occur.
Perfect.
Thank you, Marcy. Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
All right, so I just wanted to show our annual report from our fire department. Thank you so much, just so any resident who would like to read this, it's available on the city website. And then also, our Signature City Magazine, which is, everyone else wearing more hats and writing articles about our city, is also available online. And I highly recommend folks take a moment to read about what's actually happening in the city, so that we don't always have to tell them. They can find it right there on our website. Max, do you have a report?
No, I do not.
Okay, if there's no other business, we are going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.